Order the November 4th, 2019, meeting of the City of El Goma Common Council. I'll have the clerk take the roll, please.
Mary.
Here.
Cleveland.
Here.
Gressel.
Here.
Please.
Here.
Meffordan.
Here.
Pabick.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
And Dashlet is excused.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make sure the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval or changes to the order of the agenda as published. Hearing none will accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Scott, second by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. We have meeting minutes from October 7th and October 16th. Did anybody have a chance, everybody have a chance to review them? Any questions or corrections? If not, they'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Under public comment, first one this evening is Kaye Smith. She's the executive director of the El Goma Area Chamber of Commerce. I ask Kaye to come to the meeting tonight to introduce herself and basically tell us a little bit about her so that everybody, not only here in attendance, but the people at home, get to know her. So Kaye, go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you tonight. I am the new executive director for the El Goma Area Chamber of Commerce. I've got one month under my belt, so still learning a lot of things. I am a Green Bay native, born and raised there, but have been a Door County resident for about the last seven years. Five years ago, I was the branch manager for what is now Associated Bank here in El Goma, so I do have some roots here in the community, and I'm really happy to be back working in the community again. My first month has been spent getting to know all of our amazing volunteers and the staff, and getting up to speed on all the events that the chamber hosts. In November, we've got quite a busy schedule. We're hosting the Kiwanee County Holiday Stroll the last two weekends of the month, and a chamber is promoting Small Business Saturday on Saturday, November 30th. We've also got a big bundle-up campaign going on where we are collecting warm weather, or warm clothing items, I should say, for our area local schools and families in need, and that goes through November 28th. And then in December, we are going to be hosting a community event, Pet Pictures with Santa Claus. So we've got a lot coming up in the next couple of months. Encourage you to really stop by and check out some of the things that we're doing. I'm not sure many of you are aware, but El Goma is part of the Wisconsin Harbor Towns Association. The Wisconsin Harbor Towns Association has been around since 2000, and there are 19 harbor towns in the association. Ranges from Kenosha all the way up to Superior. I brought some copies of the travel guide with me, in case you're interested in looking. You might recognize El Goma in here, but it does have a pier. Every year, the Wisconsin Department of Tourism conducts tourism assessments for communities to provide a foundation for future marketing plans. I'm pleased to announce that El Goma has secured a spot next year for 2020, chosen as one of the communities to do this assessment planning. It's about a four-month process, and we're very, very excited to be chosen as one of the two communities in the state for next year. I'll have more details to come in the months, but we're in the process right now of getting the committee formed and getting surveys out and trying to get information from residents, business owners, on what your ideas are for El Goma moving forward. That's pretty much all I have. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Kaye. Appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathy Pabick, friend of Crescent Beach. Kathy?
I'm the coordinator of the Friends of Crescent Beach group in El Goma, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of that committee. First of all, our committee would like to thank the City of El Goma, the Parks and Rec Department, and the Public Works Department for all the hard work they've been doing on the beach in a very challenging year this year. I'm also here to comment on the council's reversal of its decision to draft an ordinance prohibiting the use of coal tar-based pavement sealants in the city of El Goma. Pavement sealants are the black liquid sprayed or painted on asphalt. Studies by the U.S. Geological Survey and others have identified coal tar-based sealants as a major source of PAH chemical contamination associated with human health concerns and harmful effects on aquatic life. As a sealant abrades to dust over time, it is transported into our environment by storm runoff, adhesion to tires, wind, and indoors by foot traffic. Children are particularly vulnerable because they ingest this dust and they put their hands and objects in their mouths. Children living near parking lots treated with this type of sealant have an estimated 14 times higher access lifetime cancer risk. Beginning in March of 2019, Friends of Crescent Beach, along with Lake Shore Natural Resource Partnership and the Clean Wisconsin Organization, began working to raise awareness of dangers posed by these sealants and to encourage a ban on their use. On the recommendation of the Kiwanee County Public Health Committee, the county board unanimously passed a resolution declaring its policy not to use coal tar-based sealants on county projects. However, it was beyond the county's jurisdiction to initiate a ban, and we were advised to work with local municipalities. Information was provided to the El Goma Public Works Committee, and Clean Wisconsin did a presentation for city council during its May Finance and Personnel Committee meeting and offered free legal advice. At that committee's June meeting, the council voted to move forward with drafting an ordinance, perhaps involving permitting to respond to enforcement concerns. So it was disappointing to us to read in the September Finance and Personnel Committee minutes that the work on the ordinance, quote, "had stalled due to concerns of who would enforce the ordinance," and that the council, on a three-to-four vote, with Alder's, Marying, Dashlet, Weez, and Meffordan voting no, reversed its decision to draft an ordinance prohibiting coal tar-based sealant use in El Goma. As a result, the use of a major source of PAH contamination associated with human health risks and harm to the environment will continue to be legal in El Goma. We plan a public information effort in spring, but that can do nothing to protect El Goma families who have no recourse if the apartments or condos where they live, or people in charge of their schools, workplaces, daycare facilities, churches, playgrounds, parking lots, or their neighbors disregard the concerns about PAH exposure and apply coal tar-based sealants. Only the city can provide that kind of protection. Many Wisconsin cities do. That is why we continue to request that you prohibit the use of harmful coal tar-based sealants in the city of El Goma by either a ban or permitting process and resolve not to use this type of sealant on city projects. If anyone wants more information, contact information for Friends of Crescent Beach is available on our Facebook site. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have John Pabick, who's going to give us a quick update on the Kiwanee County Economic Development Corp.
Very quickly, the Kiwanee County Economic Development Board met on 17 October. They're working on vision and mission statement. They also had a follow-up to manufacturing day in terms of things that could be done better for next year. Also, on October 23rd, they sponsored the Wisconsin Economic Development Association's ECON-D 101 for local leaders. Both Amber and myself attended that, and they're also offering on November 20th from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, marking development at James May North. It's free of charge. It's being offered by Brilliant Marketing Communication, and the title is Business Marketing 101 Seminar. That's all.
Thank you. One question, John, that I have. With the recent closing of Big De Wiggling, El Goma, does the Kiwanee County Economic Development Corp, do they make an attempt to try to help finding someone to fill that empty building, or?
They have it, they actually let me know that it was closing, so they do have it on their radar, and it would be one of the properties that I'm sure that if they get contacted, or if they know of a entity, will offer that to them.
Okay. Thank you. Is anybody else to speak tonight? Thanks, Jay. Okay, let's move on. You have to speak. Oh, sir? Yes, state your name, and you can come to the podium.
My name's Dick Swanson. I live at 710 Third Street here in town, and I'm here to talk about the vote for the driveway sealant that was not moved forward. We had an opportunity to do something easily handled by our office, by this council. We could have passed that. Nothing's going to happen until probably summer with cold. We had a lot of time to put this together. I hope we can get it done. You can't buy this stuff at Home Depot. It's all latex, Menards, Kohl's, Kohl's, I mean Lowes. City after city, municipality after municipality, has banned this coal tar sealant. We could have done that, and we should have done that, and I hope that you take as little time as you possibly can to not put it back up for a vote. Enforcement will happen. We have tons of ordinances that we can't quite get around. We talk about the enforcement issue all the time. Whether we have a full-time, part-time person, we hire somebody, that's going to be your decision. But for the 3,200 people who live here, we really want this city council to protect us. You can do this. You do not have to understand, like my father once told me, you do not have to understand the workings of a transmission to know what it does. We can fix this, we can stop this. It's good for the lake, it's good for the people, and for the life of me, I cannot understand how any of you could have voted no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else from the audience that wants to speak this evening? I apologize for missing that. Okay, then we're going to move on to general bills and credit card payments. Did everybody have a chance to review these? Any questions on any of the bills? Hearing none will accept the motion to approve the bills on the credit card payments.
So moved.
Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Roll call, vote, please.
Mary.
Aye.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Gressel.
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
Meffordan.
Yes.
Pabick.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Thank you. Any claims before the city besides the, what do we have, two that are pending?
Right now. Nothing new.
Okay. Nothing new. And then conference, I see there's no conference attendance request. Then we're going to move on to committee reports. We'll start out with the Finance and Personnel, which was called to order by yours truly in October 16th at 8:30 a.m. The roll was taken. The meeting was declared that it was in compliance with the open meeting law. There was the bills and the claims and conference attendance that were gone over, and those, the bills and the conference and the credit card payments were approved. There was also a motion to approve the attendance at the Wisconsin Department of Justice, new chiefs and sheriffs training for Chief Remicker. Under public comments, John Cross from the Summit Beach Condo Association spoke to the council regarding the desire of the owners at Summit Beach Condo to work together with the city in an effort to solve the stormwater drainage issue rather than the city versus the association. There was no old business that came before the committee. Under new business, Alderman Scott Meffordan and Police Chief Remicker provided background information on discussion held recently with the Protection of Persons and Property Committee and with the El Goma School District regarding the addition of a school resource officer. At the time, the school district is willing to support the position with a $40,000 contribution, with another $2,500 coming from St. Paul's Lutheran School. After some discussion regarding the cuts that would have to be made in order to budget for a school resource officer, Schmidt moved, and Weez second, to move forward with putting together a proposal to add a school resource officer with financial commitment from area schools and adding the position to the city's budget. Motion carried. There was a motion made in seconded to recommend to the council the first reading of the ordinance 813-2019, adjusting the city of El Goma wastewater utility rates as set forth in Section 13.05 of the municipal code, which includes a 5% sewer rate increase for 2020. Roll call, vote, that motion carried. There was a motion made in seconded to recommend to the council the adoption of Resolution Number 983-2019, authorizing the city clerk to determine the number of election inspectors needed for election held in the city of El Goma. That motion was carried. Motion made in seconded to recommend council approve the reviewing of the letter of credit for the landfill as required by the EPA. Motion carried. Motion made in seconded to recommend council approve a contract with Peterson Appraisal for city assessor services from 2020 to 2023. That motion was carried. Motion made in seconded to authorize staff to put out a request for proposal for engineering services. Motion carried. Kevin Kleiner, the developer of Bell Harbor condominiums, was present to discuss issues he is having with the site's subgrade conditions and the location of the public improvements. After reviewing a proposal from Kleiner's Engineering requesting corrective actions, Weez moved, seconded by Cleveland, to revisit this issue in spring if the site has not dried out after winter and if the issue persists. Motion made in seconded to recommend council authorize a proposal from heirs and associates for the Sixth Street Storm Sewer Lift Station analysis. That motion passed. Meffordan moved, seconded by Schmidt, to direct the public works director to work with the Maritime Point and Summit Beach Condo Association to move forward with the proposal from heirs and associate for a drainage issue analysis at the Summit Beach condos, with the city paying no more than half of the cost of the proposal. That motion carried. Motion made, Public Works Director Matt Murphy provided an update on alternate options available to residents for picking up large items at the residence due to the city eliminating the spring or fall citywide cleanup due to budget constraints. There are two different carriers, Harder's Disposal and Blue Water Services are willing to provide services to residents with 100% of the cost paid by the property owners. That being said, everybody's familiar that in our 2020 budget, we removed the spring and fall cleanup, where the city of El Goma would pick up, there was a certain Monday set aside each year where the city of El Goma would pick up any large items that did not fit in their garbage or recycling bins. Because of the extreme cost of that, the city had removed that from the budget for 2020. There's a lot of people that call City Hall wondering, what can I do if I got a Kulture refrigerator to be picked up? There is now two providers that are willing to do that at a cost to the property owner, and those names and that information can be given or requested by City Hall, and you'll be given that information and how that system works. Public Works Director Murphy and Parks and Recreation Director Sarah Robertson updated the committee on the issue with the Legion roof. Patches are no longer holding, and the roof is leaking continuously. A proposal from Miller Roofing was presented that would offer an alternative roofing material at a lower cost with a five-year warranty against leaks and no warranty on materials. Motion was made in seconded to recommend the council authorize the work to be performed by Miller Roofing at the quoted price of $13,446. For those of you that are not familiar with this, the Legion building that is located at Legion Park, actually, with a contract with the American Legion, the city is actually responsible for the exterior of the building. The Legion is responsible for the interior of the building. We've had some excessive leaking in the roof over the past several years. We've been patching it, piecemealing it. To put a brand-new roof on there came to the cost about between $65,000 and $70,000. The city felt that was a little excessive for the amount that the building was being used. We did have a conversation with the Legion to see if they would be willing to relocate to a different part of the building that we would provide in order for the city to take ownership of the entire building and do whatever needs to be done. That did not happen, but yet the leaking continued. So we come back with a, Matt Murphy has come back with a different proposal, which the council will act on tonight. Right now, and we're piecemealing it, it's leaking. It's been leaking in the same spots, I think that it leaked the last two times. So this is going to be, hopefully, a permanent fix, and we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into new business. There was also a change order and directive issued on the 2019 Road and Utility Reconstruction project. Committee discussed the need to meet to review the proposed 2020 budget, which is scheduled for Tuesday, November 5th at 4:30 p.m. here at City Hall. Lee Dashlet resigned as the Emergency Management Director for the city of El Goma. There was a motion made in seconded to recommend the council approve the mayor's appointment of Matt Murphy as Emergency Management Director to the city of El Goma. Motion was carried. The meeting adjourned at 10:43 a.m. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, then we're going to move on to Protection of Persons and Property. Scott?
The October meeting for the Protections of Persons and Property Committee was held on Monday, October 28th at 4:00 p.m. All members were present. Also in attendance were EMS Director Kelly Cos, Fire Chief Tom Ackerman, Chief of Police Randy Remicker, Mayor Wayne Schmidt, Public Works Director Matt Murphy, and City Clerk Jamie Jackson. Also, Lee Hosh was present. The agenda and the meeting minutes for September 30th were both approved. There was no one there for public comment. Under department reports, EMS Director Cos presented the El Goma Rescue. There were 26 calls in October, 339 calls year-to-date. Renee Zimmerman and Tori Schmidt did a presentation for the Kiwanee County Girl Scouts for their first aid badges. Kelly attended the Regional Trauma Area Council Meeting at St. Vincent Hospital on the 16th. Kiwanee Rescue hosted the EMS Social on October 16th. All EMS and first responder agencies in the county were invited. Chief Ackerman provided the report for the fire department. They responded to six calls since the last report. There is also a request to approve Michael Gore, Zach Blonik, Steven Petrie, Clyde Colbert for probationary member status for the fire department. Several fire prevention presentations were done in October. Fire and Rescue hosted a meeting with township leaders to discuss department activities for future plans, and the fire department used the Hagley property on Fifth Street for some training purposes. Police Chief Remicker provided the report for the police department. Calls of service for the month of October were 152, down from 2018. Year-to-date calls of service was 1444. There is a speed trailer, the new speed trailer that the city received is out and operational. Will be out until winter. During the winter, there are some enhancements and repairs that need to be done. Part-time Officer Howar is tentatively scheduled to complete his training by November 6th. Chief Remicker completed and passed his state exam on October 17th. There were no requests for trainings. The bills were approved. Under old business, there was discussion on the school resource officer update was given. There was, Chief Remicker presented us with three different options for consideration, more dialogue with the district of ministers taking place. Parking on Lake Street with the effects of the Crescent Beach Stormwater Outfall Project were discussed. There is a motion, a recommendation to change the one-way travel on North Street, north on Lake Street, and one-way travel to south on Parkway Avenue. This is the way that it was done nine or 10 years ago, changing it back to the way it was. We also discussed a dog ordinance update. Under new business, there was a lengthy discussion in regards to kayaks and swimming in the marina area. Lee Hosh was there to present some safety concerns that were expressed over kayakers and swimmers in the marina area. It is suggested that the city research and develop an ordinance as it pertains to this issue. Under license applications, we had new operator licenses for Courtney Dart and Chad Schneider walked upon tonight. For next month, we have follow-up for a school resource officer, dog ordinances in the kayak and swimming marina area. The meeting will take place on Monday, November 25th at 4:00 p.m. Meeting adjourned at 5:11 p.m.
Questions or comments? Chief Ackerman, anything to add? Chief Remicker, anything to add? Thanks, Scott. Let's move on to marina. John?
The marina committee met on October 15th at 5:00 o'clock at the marina. Those present were Jake Marying, Tom Levy, and myself. Ryan Klessig and Steve Lutke were excused. Also present were Matt Murphy and Arnie Mueller. Meeting was held in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval of the agenda was given, as were the approval of the meeting minutes from before September. There was no public comment, no correspondence. Approval of the bills took place with the payment, approval of the bills made by Marying, seconded by Levy. That's the way the whole, the whole meeting went, because we just barely had enough for quorum. Motion was carried. There were no requests for conference attendance. Under management report, Arnie Mueller delivered his resignation letter effective November 1st, 2019. October 14th, he reported the public bathrooms and fish cleaning station are closed and the water shut off. Winter rising would be completed by Belman Plumbing. On October 15th, the marina closed for the season. Public Works, Matt Murphy was scheduling power washing for the cleaning station. They had procured a utility boat to aid in marina maintenance. I guess it's going to be shared with the police department. Dock spuds are in the process of being, were in the process of being pulled. Riverside docks were pulled out for the season, and that was a fortunate thing, given what happened soon thereafter. Matt will be talking to Sean Olson regarding railing maintenance options over the winter. Under old business, there was a resolution regarding the fuel discount that was brought up by Troy. They had discussions between Arnie, Matt, and Troy to resolve that issue. Under new business, Ducks Unlimited requested the donation of two seasonal boat launch passes. Motion to donate the two 2020 seasonal launch passes to Ducks Unlimited, made by Levy, seconded by Marying. Motion carried. Fuel contracting agreements issued was tabled until spring of 2020, when we will discuss fuel sourcing, pricing, and discount agreements. Marina management succession plan discussed different options to marina management, and we'll continue those discussions at our next meeting. Winter maintenance projects. Matt discussed the proposed design for ADOC project, and the materials for decking will be further discussed at our next meeting. Second Street Bridge completion was reported to have been moved to December 7th. I don't know if that holds or not. I'll wait for public works. Items for the next meeting are fuel pricing by elements and sourcing in the 2020 marina management. Next meeting is November 12th. It will be held here at City Hall at 5:00 o'clock. Motion to adjourn by Levy, seconded by Marying. Motion carried. Meeting ended at 6:28.
Questions or comments? Matt, do you have anything to add?
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, John.
Let's move on to Park and Rec. Kevin?
Park and Rec Committee met on October 22nd at 7:00 p.m. All members were present, except Paula and Erica were excused. The agenda, September minutes, and the bills were approved. Under old business, we had five youth club rentals. Under cemetery report, the cemetery crew is just doing general fall maintenance. Let's see here, we talked about raising digging fees, and we sent that to the attorney for them to look over that. We want to keep our digging fees in line with other burial plots. Under Parks Report, the programming update, winter potting class will be held November 23rd at 10:00. Santa at the Club will be December 7th. We were accepting applications for a youth club supervisor. Community building update, talked about that roof over Legion already. We talked about our roof for the youth club gym. Received a donation from AA regarding the Knutson Hall for their meetings. We'll use that funds to have the carpets cleaned. Under Parks Update, we'd like to thank the utility commissions for awarding our department the WPPI grant. We will use that to purchase a kayak pad to give users more foot space at the kayak launch pad at Olson Park. Christmas tree points sustained lots of damage with the recent storms. We're going to reevaluate how we'll move forward in spring. Under Crescent Beach Update, Amber Shallow contacted Bob Wright of JGR to give an update on high water levels. Beach grass planting was October 26th. Thank you to the Friends of Crescent Beach for helping organize the event. Thank you- Thank you to the 80 students and their teachers for the Algoma Public Schools for their help with the beach cleanup on September 20th. Under New Business, the stadium lights at Perry Field need to be replaced. We have a quote so far per pole, and we're going to work with the utility and an engineer on seeing what we need for lighting, how many poles and how many lights using LED. Engineers from Stantec came in to meet with city officials to look at the erosion problem behind the chamber, which has already been fixed. Army Corps of Engineers came to look at the erosion damage on the south pier. And our next meeting was Tuesday, November 19th at 7:00 PM. We adjourned at 7:53.
Questions or comments? Sarah, anything to add? Thank you, Kevin. Let's move on to Public Works. Eugene, you're going to fill in for Lee.
Public Works, October 15th, 4:00 PM at City Hall. Meeting was called to order by Chairman Dashlet and was in compliance with the open meeting law. Present, Nell Meyer, Cleveland, Meverden, Dashlet, excused, Cos. Also present, Matt Murphy, Public Works Director, Jeff Hoffman with SUEZ, John Cross, and Lynn Farrell with Summit Beach Condos. The Agenda, September 24th, September 27th, and Bills were all approved for public comment. John Cross from Summit Beach Condos spoke on concerns of the September meeting minutes, referencing the recommendation from the committee to have Matt Murphy present to the Association the request for heirs to evaluate and report on ways to solve the water runoff and erosion at Summit Beach at no cost to the city. We explained to them the misunderstanding. They were satisfied. Will be attending, they will be attending the finance meeting to express their concerns. Reports, Jeff Hoffman from SUEZ reported that the month of September, again, was a month of lots of rain, but all went well. All other items are on schedule. Monthly maintenance was normal. New employee was hired to replace Jeff Seidel. Mark Cecil started September 13th. Mark's a local person from Kiwanee with several years of experience in the field. Jeff gave an update on the filter building repairs. All items are ordered, waiting for parts to arrive, and then they will move forward with the repairs. Matt Murphy gave his report on equipment maintenance and repairs. Second Street Bridge is moving right along, but completion is delayed a few weeks. Tentative opening of December 6th is why I have John, so day off. And I don't know if that's still accurate, Matt?
That is not, but...
According to the minutes, it is. Second Street Bridge is waiting on weather to possibly get base layer of blacktop down before the end of November. First Street is up, First Street is finished up, finished up on October 15th, and they are starting work on curbing gutters, prep for base layer of blacktop also. Fall cleanup started, leaf and brush pickup. There is one storm sewer left to repair, and we should be caught up for this year. Contract is signed with SUEZ for the next project, as in Jeff's report. See Jeff's report for more details. Old Business, none. New Business, none. Next meeting, November 19th at City Hall.
Questions or comments? Matt, do you want to give an update on the bridge?
Do you want it this Monday or next Mondays? Because they change every Monday.
Well, let's try with the latest.
The latest now, for people that don't know, Friday, they did, they were able to pour the bridge deck. The complete bridge deck was all poured, about 600 yards of concrete, 653 yards, I think, to be exact, was poured. That has 10 days of cure time before they can start stripping down the false work now. If that all, weather permitting, stays on schedule, that false work will come out, and then both sides will start to get, the approaches will start to get built up. Built up, as of 1:00, 1:30 today, they are aiming for the last week in November to blacktop. So, cross our fingers, we're hopefully starting to go the other way a little bit here, so...
And what about our projects? Have you noticed the sidewalks are all poured and...
They finished pouring concrete on all of the First Street and Second Street projects Friday. They still do have plastic on them. They're hoping tomorrow or Wednesday, the plastic will be able to come off. Peters was here today. They put topsoil down on both sides of the sidewalk. They did seed and straw everything, and they should actually finish that tomorrow. Whether it seeds or not, if it sprouts and comes up in spring, good. If it doesn't, Peters will come back and reseed everything for the city. The binder mat is down on everything that completes Peters' work. So, what you see there now is a finished product till spring. They'll come and they'll mill off all those high spots and put the final mat down in spring. I would say Peters' contract is about 95% complete. There's some little odds and ends things that have to be gone through, and then, of course, that final mat of blacktop comes spring.
Is the temperature a concern for blacktop on this project?
Yes, the temperature is a concern. So, what you're hoping for to put the binder mat of blacktop down is that you have no frost in the road underneath it, which we didn't have, and then to keep it over 162 degrees as it's coming out of the trucks. So, we're walking around with a lot of probes this last week here between blacktop and concrete, so...
Any other questions? I just have a question that people have been coming up to me. On the Fourth Street Bridge on the north side, that dip that's in there, is that the county's or the state's responsibility to fix that?
Well, we're kind of fighting back and forth right now with that. The county is saying it's ours, and, but the connecting highway, it's theirs. So, we're working on getting it fixed one way or another, but I believe that it's theirs to fix on the north side.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Eugene, for filling in for Lee. All right, then the next one is Tourism and Promotion. Mitch?
Meeting was called to order on October 21st by Lee Hosh at 1:35 PM. Present, Lee Hosh, Bob Davis, Keith Smith, Jan Dart, absent, Scott Osborne, and myself. Agenda, May meeting minutes and the financial report were read and approved. Smith attended Harbor Town meeting in Kiwanee. She reports that the meeting was well-attended, and Kathy Pabbit was given the opportunity to talk about the Friends of Crescent Beach. Smith has agreed to be the Algoma Tourism and Promotion Representative of Harbor Town. There will be an interim meeting on April 24th that will be held in Algoma. Commission members gave, or started the budget review by selecting those items that will remain the same. There will also be some consideration of other items that will be discussed at the November meeting. Smith also agreed to represent Algoma Tourism and Promotion in the Green Bay Visitor Board of Directors. During initial discussion of sports shows, Smith indicated Friendly Algoma should be ready by July, January 7th. At the May meeting, Sarah Kraus asked for funds to have someone work up a safety brochure for canoe and kayaks that will be available for the summer boating season. Smith will check the CSS brochure was completed and how it was being advertised, if it had been. Hosh will bring up safety issue of kayak usage on the Annappe River between Olson Park and Lake Michigan to the Chairman of the PTT. Next meeting is November 18th, 1:30. Moved by Dart, seconded by Davis, to adjourn at 3:06.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question regarding the brochure. Is the verbiage for the brochure already done, and was there any, did Lee get the information about the dangers of kayaking near the marina included?
I wasn't at the meeting, but as of that date, there was, we're not even sure if their brochure was done.
Right.
So, I don't know what they found. We haven't, I haven't talked to anybody since then.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mitch. Let's move on to Cable. Jake?
No cable.
No cable. How about Library then, Jake?
Oh, that we've got.
Okay.
Library meeting was held on October 21st, 2019. Members present, Director Kolbeck, President Schoenborn, Diana McKinnish, Sue Haas, Maring, Nicole Meverden, and Lila Schlurf. Julia Lasecki was excused. Called to order, motion to approve the agenda, carried no public input. A motion to approve the minutes was made, seconded, and approved. Friends of the Library report, the Friends' annual bake sale was held on October 11th and 12th, to resounding success. Lots of sugar, lots of sugar.
Lots of sugar.
And the Algoma Book Corner will be open on Halloween for Trick or Treat. Well, we passed that one. And Directors Report, some upcoming program highlights, annual Halloween party was on October 28th. Super Mario Tournament on Nintendo Switch, that means something to somebody, November 5th at 3:15 PM at the library. Books and Brew Book Club at Steel Street Hops. You want to read a book and have a beer, great place to do it. Thanksgiving Turkey Dilemma Escape Room on November 22nd, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. My understanding, the escape rooms are really fun to do, and if you like a good mystery, why not attend a turkey escape room? Family Literacy Bingo during the month of November. Bingo cards will be available with activities revolving around reading and working together during the month of November. All participants entered will win a prize. We are working with Aging and Disability Resource Center to begin memory care cafe at the library beginning in December. So, if you have someone that is suffering Alzheimer or senility, or just needs some help running through a library and their caregivers, please contact the library. They'll turn you on to that great program. The program will be held once a month for individuals dealing with memory loss and their caregivers. Kathy attended the Wisconsin Library Association Conference on October 9th through the 11th. She had a great time. Will be monitoring water in the children's area for roof leaks. No leaks the last few times. Matt Murphy apparently has done yeoman's duty for the library as well. Way to go, Matt. A new leak was noticed in the programming room during the last few rainfalls. That's kind of right where the City Hall and the library meet, at that door entrance. John from Miller Solutions and Public Work Director, Matt Murphy looked at the roof. We're waiting to hear what the next steps will be. Matt, anything? Nothing yet?
Yes, actually, I have a proposal, and I forwarded that on to Kathy, and she will be bringing that to your next board meeting.
Fabulous. Treasurers report revenues and disbursements were presented and approved. Library bills were presented and approved. Old Business, none. New Business, 2019 policy review. The Board of Trustees had an additional child safety policy was presented and approved. This is kind of, kind of to combat the library becoming a free daycare, as opposed to a place of learning and reading of books. Closed session, none. Open session, none. Items for next meeting, none. The meeting was adjourned at 4:34, and our next meeting will be held November 18th, 2019, at 4:00 PM. Now, my update is for a birthday this month. November 10th is a very significant day. For some of you, may or may not know, I don't know, do we, I wonder whether we need to stand up. I think for this particular presentation, we, I guess we need to stand up. So, if we would, please. 244 years ago, through an act of the Continental Congress, and then Commander in Chief George Washington, the United States Marine Corps was born on November 10th. So, hats off, anybody, any Marines in the, in the audience? If not, any in our TV audience, thank you very much for your service, and happy birthday.
Thank you, Jake. Any other questions or comments? Kathy, do you have anything to add? Thanks. Okay, then let's move on to the Medical Board. John?
The Medical Board, Algoma Medical Center Board of Directors was called to order by Mark Rodrian, the Vice President, at 4:30 on October 24th. We met in the north wing of the Medical Center. Members present were Pabbit, Dart, Schmidt, Wagner, Rodrian, and Sue Hep. Joan Gressel was excused. Others present was Gene Marsh and Carol Nell. Both the agenda was approved, and the September 26th meeting minutes were also approved. There was no public comment. Financial report for September was reviewed with occupancy rate of 78.7, average daily census 31.97, total patient revenues of 271,558, total operating revenues of 299,659, total operating expenses of 277,705, with a net profit of $3,491. We had capital outlays of $5,096. That was for the Cedar Core Corporation for Engineering Services. Bills were approved. Old Business, employee physical and drug screening costs and practices. Gene reported that another skilled nursing facility was using the Assistant Director of Nursing to provide screening physicals. Gene will make, will be making clarifying inquiries to determine if we can adopt this approach to screening physicals. That would be a savings to the, to the center. New Business, rebidding paving of both parking lots moved by Pabbit, seconded by Dart to reissue the request for proposal for paving of both parking lots. Motion was carried. Wage differential across departments, for example, CNA is working as activity aides, dietary staff working as cook. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Pabbit, to authorize wage payment in the higher amount to staff cross-trained and working in two different job roles. Motion was carried. Initial budget discussion, estimates of federal reimbursement of the new PDPM prospective reimbursement system was reviewed, and it appears favorable for us. State Medicaid per diem reimbursement was reported to be going from $187 a day to $212 a day. Again, that would be highly beneficial to the Medical Center. New private payment rates effective January 1, 2020 will include the bed tax in the pricing. Motion by Pabbit, seconded by Dart, to increase the semi-private daily room rate to $275 per day, and the daily private room rate to 315. Motion was carried. Bylaws discussion regarding executive committee, quorum, and administrator autonomy resulted in no changes to the existing bylaws. Understanding Business, the Friends of the Algoma Medical Center, report was received and accepted with no board action required. As a reminder, that there will be, there will be a pulled pork sandwich sale on November 19th benefiting the Friends of the AMC and their efforts. Administrator Facility Report received and accepted. Following topics reviewed, census, referral patterns, staffing and marketing, staff using the QAPI principles to develop a comprehensive assessment program, and that was very beneficial, and I'll be reporting on that next month. Flu immunizations are now required as a condition of employment. Medical exceptions must be documented and reviewed by the administrator. We went into closed session at 5:46. We reconvened, back out at 5:55. Motion by Dart, seconded by Wagner, to reconvene. That's how that took place. Action as a result of closed session. The Board approved a 1% pay raise retroactive to July 2019 for the, which is the administrator's start work anniversary, and the pay raise was for the nursing home administrator. Next regular board meeting is 4:30 on Thursday, November 21st. We moved that from Thanksgiving Day to the week before, and it'll again be at the Long Term Care North Wing Meeting Room. Adjourned, and at 5:58.
Questions? Yeah, questions or comments?
About if it on the 19th, is that inside, outside?
Which one?
The pulled pork.
Pulled pork.
Is that...
That is...
Where are they holding that?
What they're, what they're actually going to do is they're going to try to take pre-orders and deliver, otherwise they will have it up at the facility.
Yeah, they offer lunches. You can walk there and have lunch. You can walk there and have lunch and pay for it.
They have popcorn, too. Ask Al, he gets it all the time. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, John. Let's move on to utility. In the absence of Lee Dash, and I will do the utility minutes. The utility meeting was called to order on October 16, 2019, at 5:30 PM by President Guy Hosh. Role was taken. All members were present. There was a motion made in second to top the agenda. That carried. There was also a motion made to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, and that carried. Under new business, discussion was held to change the current practice of the general manager signing all change order approvals after utility commission approval. Recommendation is to have the utility commission president and a general manager sign change order approvals, and then provide the change order information to utility commission. There was a motion made in second, and that carried. Discussion was held about issuing requests for proposal for engineering services for next year and future years with the city. Motion made in second to participate in that with the City of Algoma. That carried. Under old business, the 2019 water project updates. The water projects on First and Second Street, due to the Second Street Bridge Project, have been completed. If there's any questions, there is an attached managers' report for more details. Planning Commission update, no new utility project. There was a motion made in second to approve the payment of bills as presented. That motion carried. There was a motion made in second to approve the monthly financial reports. That motion carried. Capital and operating and maintenance budgets were reviewed. Motion was made second to approve the capital, operating, maintenance budget as presented. There was a roll call vote taken. That carried. Managers gave the reports. Office manager and the manager each gave their report. Schmidt requested an explanation of what an unmetored private fire protection service is. Below is the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin definition of this service. And the reason I'm reading it, because there was a question that was posed to me, and I didn't understand it, so I want to make sure the individual, if he is watching this at home, hopefully understands the explanation that I received. This service shall consist of permanent or continuous unmetored connections to the main for the purpose of supplying water to private fire protection systems such as automatic sprinkler systems, stand pipes, and private hydrants. This service shall also include reasonable quantities of water used for testing, check valves, and other backflow prevention devices. Monthly private fire protection service demand charges are based on the size of the connection. What that means, at any business that has a sprinkler system, there is a monthly fee that basically they get charged, and I didn't understand it, and I wanted to make sure that it was talked about at the meeting. Meeting adjourned at 6:50 PM. Any questions or comments? Pete, do you have anything to add? No? Okay. Let's then move on to Board of Appeals. Jamie?
Okay. There was a zoning Board of Appeals meeting on October 10th. The request was from Steve Botke, who wishes to construct a storage building at the rear of his parcel at 1600 Burt Street with a maximum building height not to exceed 21 feet. He needed to request a variance because the maximum building height is 18 feet. The chairman opened the public hearing. There was only one resident present, and he expressed his support of the variance, and indicated that he, too, had been granted a variance for the same situation. There was no one else present wishing to comment on it. Nell moved, seconded by Guth, to grant the variance to Steve Botke for purposes of constructing a storage building at 1600 Burt Street with a maximum building height not to exceed 21 feet, and directed the building inspector to issue a permit. Meeting adjourned at 6:15, and the next day, Mr. Botke came and got a building permit.
Questions or comments? Is there a reason why he needed to go from the 18 to the 21?
He wanted it taller to accommodate a camper.
Because we're pretty strict on that. Just surprised that they allowed it. Okay. And there is no recourse from the council on anything like that. They make the final determination. Thanks, Jamie. Then that's it for the reports. Motion to approve the receipt to the committee reports. Moved by Eugene. Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you for all the reports. Now let's move on to old business. First item is the ordinance 18 repealing Section 13.012C, Chapter of the City of Algoma Code of Ordinance regarding compensation for utility commissioners. This is the second reading, so we can have a motion to adopt. Moved by Jake. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Roll call vote.
Gary.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Gressel.
Yes.
Wheeze.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Pabek.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, ordinance 819, creating Section 18.19 of Chapter 18 of the Algoma School Code of Ordinance regarding conditional use. Second reading and adoption. Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Mitch. Any questions or comments? Not roll call vote.
Meverden.
Yes.
Pabek.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Gressel.
Yes.
Wheeze.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's go on to new business, consideration of applications for two new operator licenses. You read it in the PPP Committee Report for Courtney Dart and Chad Schneider. Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by John. Any questions? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Ordinance number 813, 2019, ordinance amendment adjusting City of Algoma wastewater utility rates as set out in Section 13.085 of the Admissible Code. This is just the first reading, but I need a motion to move on to the second reading.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Item C, Resolution 983, 2019, authorizing the city clerk to determine the number of election inspectors needed for elections held in the City of Algoma. This is just the formality that Jamie needs that.
So moved.
Moved by Jackie.
Second.
Second by Scott. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Item D, Resolution 986, 2019, authorizing issuance and sale of $2 million general obligation promissory note series 219. This evening, we have Jeff Belangi. He is the representative from Hutchinson, Shockey, and Early and Company, and Jeff, of course, takes care of all our financial needs, and Amber. So did you want to tag team, or what do you guys want to do?
Just actually going to take the podium.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. We have borrowing of Geo Promissory Notes tonight, money being used for your capital improvements program. I want to certainly thank Amber and staff, and everyone here at the city, the mayor, for their excellent work on the rating call that we had with Moody's Investor Service as part of this process, drafting and putting together an official statement, which is a document that is a full disclosure document that we use to market the debt. And this morning, we completed an underwriting, of which we have interest rates to offer to the city tonight with respect to this resolution. Those interest rates will be good for 24 hours, so I'll go through them with you. If you like them, I'd suggest we adopt the resolution and lock into them, and in about two weeks' time, with the help of Corals and Brady Legal Firm in Milwaukee and the city, we'll close the issue and deliver funds to the accounts of the city. Passed out two sheets of paper. One's got a little bit of, kind of a pretty green writing on it. Maybe it's not pretty, but it's green. The other is a synopsis of the sale of the $2 million Geo Promissory Note Series 219A. Our general obligation debt is rated A3 by Moody's. For those of you who've some familiarity with ratings, the higher the rating, in any given market, the lower the interest cost ought to be. There are ratings that run from BAA through the A category, 123, or 321, to a AA category, 321, to the highest rating any municipality can get, and that's a AAA rating. There aren't many in the country. So AA's would be Dane County, Outagamy County, Wauwatosa. There's probably one or two more in the state, didn't come to me right away, and those municipalities that can, of course, print their money, just joking, they would also be AAA. We have improved our position in terms of credit. I'd like to give you a little five seconds or five minutes of that, if you will. Administration and the mayor have been working hard, and I've been encouraging us to continue to improve that, because, of course, as we borrow money, and our needs will continue to be there for infrastructure improvements, we'll have to go to the market. We've structured this debt so that it'll ultimately pay out completely in 10 years. Certainly, that's shorter than some of the useful life of the projects that are being entertained, but keep in mind, these aren't the only projects you're going to have to do over the next 10 years. So we anticipate in getting the city to a point where every second year, you'll be in a position to borrow 1.8 to 2.2 million dollars, because over that preceding three years, you'll have paid that much back. So you'll be able to address your ongoing capital needs, yet not put yourself in a position where you have mounting debt as you go forward. Does anyone understand that? We are currently paying off about a little over $500,000 annually in principal amount. I would like to get us to a point, and we will in a couple of years, where that number's about $600,000 to $650,000. Of course, I don't have to tell you, as you look at the various projects that get bid out, and the things that you need to do just to maintain the infrastructure for the citizens of Algoma, it becomes an expensive proposition. But I think for a city of our size, that's a level we'll need to get to. That'll be mitigated due to the fact that you have undertaken some projects which are going to diversify and improve your tax base. We've got a redevelopment authority that you were wise enough to get created, and working with a developer to enhance some real growth to the city. And of course, I think, as you all know, the more value we have, and the larger our tax base, the more we get to do at a tax rate that's palatable for your constituents. So all in all, looking at the last few years, I'm encouraged by what I see out of the city, and certainly, it's a nice place to live, beautiful way of life here. I've known Algoma for a long, long time, and happy to be representing you in the interest rate market. So with that, I'll get to the synopsis of the $2 million issuance. As I said, we had a par amount of $2 million. We have a total purchase price, less all expenses paid, of $2,343. Slight premium. That premium's, as you can see below, the difference between those two amounts, so we'll be delivering at the time of the closing, $2,343 to the city. The true interest costs are all-in rate. Keep in mind, we had to pay for rating, we had to pay for legal opinion, we had to pay for printing, distribution, salesman, those types of things. You have a true all-in cost for this 10-year financing of 2.75%. That's a pretty darn nice rate for these particular projects. Certainly, I think you should go forward, and Public Works can tell you, and anyone who's been involved in bidding projects over a period of time, that's going to, you know, more than eaten up in the next couple of years in terms of new projects, that new cost for goods and services. So all in all, when we say we're discounting our money for 10 years at a 2.75%, it's pretty darn good, if you're the borrower. You have maturities that we sold. We're paying our payments on 10-1, October 1st of each year. We blended those into some existing debts, so you have payments in 2021 out to 2029. Does everyone see that? If you look to the right, there is a yield, or an interest rate yield associated with that. Whoever bought that first maturity, they're getting a yield of 1.55%. Not very much, is it? If you go down the road, it's 160, 164, until you get to year 2029, and that person is only getting a yield of 2.30%. Gives you some kind of an idea as to how good the market is if you're a borrower. Not so much if you're an investor and a buyer of municipal bonds, even though these are tax-exempt, federally speaking, that's not much of a rate of return. And we're happy about that as a city, because it means we pay less for the cost of our money. Everyone understand? What I did is I, on the green sheet, looked to the market to find it comparable. Lo and behold, there's a community called Kewanee, Wisconsin. Some of you may have heard about it. You might have even driven through it. On the 30th of last month, a few days ago, they issued $3.2 million, a little change. They also went out and bought, they got a rating on it, they bought an insurance policy to buy themselves a AA rating. Does everyone see that in the rating column? NR, AA, NR. Now let me explain that. We have an A3. In an ideal world, every little grade that you go up ought to get you a lower interest rate in the same market. Are you with me?
Yeah.
Okay, they paid some money. I didn't go look and see how much, but these insurance policies aren't cheap, and they bought a rating that gives them a AA. So if we'd have done that, we'd have gone from an A3 to an A2, to an A1, to a AA minus, to a AA. Two, one. Four grades, right? Let's say it's even five basis points. That means, in an ideal world, those AA's in the same market ought to get an interest rate or a yield in each of those maturities, let's say at least conservatively 20 basis points less. You with me? I mean, that buying that credit rating should do something for you, other than just get you in the market. Let's take a look. Take it, the YT, you can look yield to maturity, it's the same, but YTW and our YTW. We didn't have a 20 maturity. Theirs was a 155. Our 21 is a 155, and they're a 160. Okay, let's go down again. We're a 160, they're a 165. We're a 164, they're a 175. We're a 175, they're a 180. Well, so much for my theory that if you buy yourself a grade of rating that's four grades higher, you ought to get a lower interest rate. Let's go one more. 85, they're a 90. Oh, here we go, long end. 2%, we're a 205. We're a 212, they're a 210. Two basis points. I could have bought you an insurance policy to get us a AA. That would have been wasting your money, I think.
Do you attribute that to the market being so super competitive, as it is, that the differential just isn't there?
Scott, you and I have never met before. We've never talked before. Thank you for this segue. No, I attribute that to better underwriting by our company, as opposed to the one that your sister city used.
Well, that, of course, too.
Thank you.
You work for Shockey?
Yeah. I was just, I mean, you get to a certain point where there's just no more...
The differential, those are great rates, too, Scott. Don't misunderstand me when you look at that rate, but I'm just, it's a relative thing we're talking about, and I'm nitpicking a little bit, but I like to nitpick from this standpoint, because we did better relative to them. I can find out what they paid for that insurance policy, but they paid a lot more to get their bond issue done than you did. So I have nothing against Kewanee. They're a nice community. They're just not as good as Algoma. Oh, boy, I'm in trouble.
Houses for sale.
Anyway, I didn't want to pick on them, but it's just coincidental that, you know, you try to find Wisconsin credits in the same market that sold around the same time. This one was really close. Again, they're a revenue bond, but it doesn't matter. When you look at the differential in insurance, it's still a AA bank qualified versus an A3 bank qualified. I'm pretty happy with our underwriting on this. And I think, if anything, all kidding aside, it should give you some pretty confident level that we did represent you pretty well in the market relative to what a much larger firm than ours did representing the City of Kewanee. So I don't want to get a call from the mayor of Kewanee tomorrow, reading me the riot act, but I'm sure he's a nice guy, or she, I don't even know if it's...
You're on TV. You're on TV. You're on TV. Thank you, Jeff.
I like the people in Door County. They got a good sense of humor. So with that, you have a resolution, of course, and those resolutions need commotion and a second and a roll call vote, since it's a borrowing, but congratulations. And... Thank you. I know you're anxious to get those projects underway, and...
Do we have any comment from our city treasurer?
Yep. So this plays into our plan to borrow about $2 million every two years or so. So, this plays into our plan to borrow about $2 million every two years or so, pending on the rate structure and what we can afford. But at this point, we can. The payments for the $2 million borrowing are already built into the 2020 budget that you'll be discussing tomorrow night. So, that's all been covered by our planning for the budget for next year. And the Mayor has indicated that the vast majority of this $2 million is going to go to Streets. We've had a few little hiccups with the emergency repairs, like the Legion roof and things like that, that have to be covered, but for the most part, Streets are going to receive the majority of this money. Now, while that sounds exciting to the general public sitting at home going, "Oh, my goodness, they're going to do $2 million worth of roadwork," well, it's not going to get us far. It's a few blocks is about all we're going to get for it. But it's a start, and we'll keep working with Jeff Belangi and Hutchinson Shockey early to make sure that we keep improving our credit rating so in the future, when we borrow, we aren't paying quite so much in interest so that maybe we could borrow a little bit more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jeff. Always appreciate all the advice and working with you has been a real pleasure.
Come on, Amber Mayor. Thank you.
Amber, we'll be going through the Moody's report at our finance and personnel to give you a little more explanation how that meeting went and why we're where we're at. So, thanks again, both of you. I appreciate all your hard work in this. This means a lot. I mean, the interest rate is good. We can afford it. We're not putting a big burden on the City, and hopefully, we're going to get some, with some real creative RFPing by our Public Works Director, we'll probably get about $2.5 million worth of work for $2 million, I'm sure. So, what I need to do here is a motion to accept authorizing the issuance of the sale of the $2 million. General Obligation Promissory Notes. Moved by Kevin. Second by John. I'll take a roll call vote on that, please.
Mary.
All right.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Okay, let's move on to Resolution 987, 2019. That's authorizing the Mayor to enter into a contract with Peterson Appraisal for Assessment Services. Believe it or not, we've never had a contract for our assessment services, and I did have a meeting a couple of months ago with our assessor, and he was asking to put a contract together, which is, it's just good business. So, we did put something together. It was reviewed by legal and everything, and what I'm looking tonight is basically a motion to authorize the contract.
Move.
Moved by Mitch.
Second.
Second by Eugene. Any questions or comments? Give me a roll call vote on that, too, Jamie, please.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 98, 2019, authorizing the Mayor to enter into contract with Miller Roofing Solutions LLC for repairs to the Legion roof. I kind of got into this a little bit when we, when we were talking under our reports. I'm just going to let Matt give a little update, and if Sarah, if you want to jump in, what's taken place, what kind of damage has been done, what our obligations are. We feel in the discussion that we had, this is the best option for us, and I'm going to let Matt talk a little bit more about that and about the warranty. I think they need to be aware of that, Matt.
Sure. So, the roof that the Mayor is talking about here is actually not a new roof. This is a coating that goes on to the existing roof that is currently on the Legion. So, where there's holes and some issues, they will cut that out, they'll do some patchwork, and then the whole roof gets a solid coating. Somebody had mentioned earlier about Flex Seal, and I think everybody's probably seen Flex Seal. When it's said and done, that's more or less what you're going to get, is it's going to be a solid membrane mat that gets sprayed on and becomes one piece of roof to keep the water out. The warranty on it, because of the current roof that's there today, there's an aluminum coating that they put on the rubber roof. I'm not even sure, Sarah, I don't know if, prior to us both being here, I believe. So, the product that they use, they will not stand behind the product because of that aluminum coating. They will stand behind their labor for 10 years on that roof. So, if something would happen to leak, they will come for the cost of the product, but we would have to pay for the labor. I, excuse me. We would have to pay for the cost of the product, not the labor, for them to come back to fix that if we would have any issue in the next 10 years. Does that make sense? Does anybody have any other questions?
I think it's, 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 right now, it's the most cost-effective way. We need to do something. I mean, it's pretty evident the water's been running in with, with all the rain we've had and everything else, and, of course, like I said, with the agreement that we have with the Legion, it is our obligation as a City to keep the exterior of the building in repair. When we looked at a new roof, putting a new roof on is what, $65,000?
Yeah, between $60,000 and $70,000.
And, and the thing is, we don't know what the future of that building is, and for us to go ahead and spend $65,000, $70,000 on something that maybe five years from now, we don't know. We might end up getting the whole building back and decide what we want to do. So, this was the cheapest alternative. Like I said, the gentleman that met with Matt and came up here, they are going to warranty the labor, and the only reason they're not warranting the material is because of the material that's currently on there. So, we feel that this is the best solution. I know, Sarah, do you have any other comments on that? Otherwise, I would appreciate the support of the Council in authorizing this to go forward. John?
I have a question.
Sure.
Are there early worrying signs of the interaction between the aluminum and the product? So, you can, you can tell if it's failing or not because the way I understood it is that the likelihood of failure is not, is not very high, but there is potential, and that's what causes the not being able to warranty the material.
What it is, John, and talking with, with the guy, the gentleman from Miller Roofing, he feels confident that we will not have a problem with it. The supplier of the product that he uses will not stand behind it for the simple fact that they will etch that roof off with a cleaner to try to get the majority of it off, but if there would be a piece of that aluminum that would flake off underneath and cause it not to bond there, he said that's where you could possibly, down the road, have a problem. Obviously, everybody knows with heat and cold rubber flexes and, and cold moves back. With that happening throughout the years, the company won't stand behind it because of that aluminum possibly could flake off down the road.
But do you know what you're looking for to indicate whether or not there's a failure or not?
Water back in the... No.
Before we get to that point.
I, I do not, John. No, at this time, I do not. I can definitely ask that question, but I don't know in a visual inspection if there is something that is a telltale sign.
Blistering, bubbling, something like that.
I would definitely check into it, but I, tonight, I do not know that answer.
Okay. Are they going to be able to do it this year?
They are not. That's the other downfall of it, is we need to crawl up there. Mike Selcider's been there last week. I've been there last week. Mike's been on the roof. I've been on the roof. I haven't in the last week, but I have in the past. To apply this product, it has to be 50 degrees outside and rising. So, we're looking probably about August. No.
What happened to 45 and rising?
Mike has been doing, he's, he was on the roof almost all day today, cleaning it and getting, you know, the debris off so that he could do some patching. He says there's some, quite a few cracks that he, he feels that he could kind of patch to get us through the winter, and then it, hopefully, that would hold before spring.
Speaking of patching, we can just, a couple remarks on if we bring in an outside contractor to patch, how much it's costing us each time he comes in.
Costs us about $500 to $600 for him to come in and more or less go up there with a can of roof patch, I'm going to call it, and more or less on his way up the ladder, tell me that this isn't going to work, it's going to be leaking tomorrow, but I'll send you a bill if that's what you want. So, we've taken it upon ourselves to say, we're going to try some things. Sarah's looked into a couple of different products. Myself and Amber's looked into a product that we're going to try some things. I think...
I think they were going to use both of them, and I think that'll work.
Both of them. Yeah.
I think they're going to direct.
They do not.
Any other questions?
Blue tar.
Yep.
So, this work is going to happen from next year, so we have to look at this.
We want to lock the price in.
So, what if something happens between now and then? We don't want to go forward with this action. Will we lock into the contract or what?
It's a great question.
You mean if the place burnt down or something?
Whatever.
Or collapsed, the roof collapsed or something?
Whatever.
That's an excellent point. I guess we didn't really...
It's only $390 if it's a month. It's a 3% iced project. It's $290.
Good question, Eugene. Feeling of the Council? You want to hold off just in case?
Let's get that question answered. I don't think, I mean, they're not coming until spring.
Let's, yeah, let's do that. Let's get his, John's question answered. Let's, you get his, and we can bring this up again at the December meeting.
I mean, if we're writing a contract for it, we can write a, an escape clause into it, you know, if something happens where we no longer own the building, or something happens to the building, or...
I, I do agree, but right now, we're not writing a contract. We're using his contract language and more or less signing off to it, John.
Okay.
I, I agree with what you're saying, but as of today, we're not writing a contract. We're using his language.
Yeah. We're, we're...
So, more or less, tonight, we would be locking in with the price, tomorrow morning, paying half down and waiting on what Eugene is saying. What if this isn't, I think we'd be maybe better off looking into that.
Let's also see how long that price holds. Push comes to shove, maybe he's saying, "Well, it's January, maybe it's not, maybe it's June or something," or, but you'd want to get it done when it's 50 degrees, which, like you said, is probably August. Okay? Is that, is the Council comfortable with that, then? We won't take any action tonight? Okay. Thanks for bringing that up, Eugene. Appreciate your comments, John, yours. Okay, let's move on then to Resolution 989, 2019, authorizing the City to renew the 2014 tax exempt sanitary sewer bond anticipation note with the Bank of Luxembourg. Amber?
So, this is a bond anticipation note, or otherwise known as a ban, that is currently in place. It is a tax-exempt ban. It was originally put in place for five years. The one advantage to doing a bond anticipation note is you only have to have one times the debt coverage for the payment. This particular one was originally about $500,000. We're down to about $250,000. So, through the state laws, we can renew this for one more five-year term. You can only have bands out there for 10 years before you have to go to the bond market. At $250,000, after five more years, we'll have it paid off. We won't ever have to go to the bond market to issue it. So, the bank gave us an interest rate of 3.57%, so it is higher than what the bond markets are, but at that small amount of $250,000, you aren't going to get much better out at the bond market. You'd be paying a lot more in fees than you would save by going out there.
So, this is just a rollover?
It's rolling over an existing debt, yep. If we didn't roll it over, we'd have to pay $300,000 in two weeks. If we roll it over, we pay $50,000, and then $50,000 for the next five years, and it'll be paid off.
The rate went up.
Any other banks interested in doing this?
No.
Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by John. Any other questions or comments? Let's do a roll call vote on this one, too, please.
Meverden.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Mary.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Okay, last item under new business. Exciting. We have the, we need to approve four new members for the Algoma Fire Department. Michael Gores, Zach Lonix, Stephen Petrie, and Clyde Colbert. These would be probationary members. Scott, second by Mitch. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Mayor's appointments and comments. I have no appointments, but I have a couple of comments in, kind of in connection with, with Jake down there. As everybody knows, that Veterans Day is coming up next Monday. The Algoma Community Band, along with the high school band, is putting on a concert on November 13th at the, next door at the Performing Arts Center at 7:00 PM. And I just think it's a great way that this community can show support for our veterans. I mean, it's not easy being a veteran, especially with the Agent Orange and other things that are going on, so I'm asking the community to come out and support the veterans by attending the band concert on November 13th at 7:00 PM, again at the Performing Arts Center. The other thing is a little update. Administrator, believe it or not, we've had a total of eight applications. They've been screened. We have narrowed it down to four. We feel those are four good candidates that will be interviewed on November 14th. Once we weed them down to hopefully two, then what we're going to do is kind of a roundtable thing with the Council where we will basically have the Council sit down with each individual. Not a real formal question-type thing, but just get to know them, ask your own personal questions, thing like that, avoiding a, you know, just a, basically an interview. That'll be done prior to that, so keep your fingers crossed that we're going to come up with two good candidates for that. Don't forget, November 5th at 4:30 is the Council Budget Workshop. Hopefully, that'll be done in a few hours. Everybody's had a chance to look at the budget. The department heads have gone through everything. They can't cut anymore. The only way we're going to cut more is if we start cutting personnel. So, I think we'll, I don't think we have to cater luncheon for that, do we, Amber? So, I think it'll go pretty good, but anyway, those are the things that I wanted to talk about. Our next meeting is Monday, December 2nd, again at 6:00 PM. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Oh, I have one thing.
Yep.
Can we talk about the coal tar December finance one more time?
Can put it on the agenda again.
I don't want to do it in this month, but I'd like to do it in December.
December. Have Jamie put it on. Jamie, would you put that on the agenda then, please? Okay. Any other items that you want on finance or personnel or the next Council meeting? None? Then I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.